We have the next item, which is number five, is the agenda approval. Are there some corrections and additions to this agenda as presented?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are some corrections. You have a revised agenda before you under the consent items. We'd like to add as consent item number two, consideration to approve a location agreement with the historic Effingham Society for the use of the early streethouse. We'd also like to add as new business number twelve. Consideration to approve a proclamation declaring April twenty twenty-two as child abuse prevention month in Effingham County. Additionally, we'd like to request that items number one and two under new business be removed from the agenda.
Okay.
We'd also like to ask under planning board items, number sixteen and seventeen. The planning board recommends denying an application by Onsite Truck Maintenance LLC as agent for William Henry Webb. Request a conditional use to allow for a diesel truck and semi truck service business located at eleven oh five Stillwell Road. Zone B two, map number four oh nine parcel forty-nine A in the fourth district. Also, the second reading of this item, which is listed as number seventeen, to be postponed to the May third meeting.
All right, very good. Does anyone have any questions about the agenda that we are approving with the corrections and additions as given to us by our clerk?
Stephanie, um, those two items, what the postponed to five, uh, May third, will they be on the five o'clock or six o'clock?
They will be on the five o'clock because it's old business.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Mr. Chairman, also for that new business number twelve, if we could move that item to the first item under new business.
We'll do that. Just remind me when we get to it if I don't call without.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, we have our agenda presented to us with the additions and corrections and postponements. I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the additions and corrections from our clerk.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd, to approve the agenda as presented and corrected and added to by our clerk. All in favor say aye.
Uh-uh.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, we have our agenda. Everyone has a copy, I think, in front of you of the current agenda. Item number six is our minutes, consideration to approve the March fifteen twenty twenty-two Board of Commissioner regular meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to any of those minutes from any of the board? Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes. Is read.
Second. Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Burdette, to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Welcome everyone that's in the audience tonight, and I'm always glad to have our friends and family in the community come out for a meeting and participate in our government. If you make your comments to the agenda items only, that'd be great. Two to three minutes would be really wonderful because if there's a lot of people that want to speak to an item, it gives more opportunity to speak. If someone's already said something, it helps move the meeting along. If you'll say everything that that gentleman or that lady said, but I want to add these two things to it. That'll help us not be repetitive in certain times. So we appreciate you being here and your comments. All the correspondent documents for this meeting have been on our website and in the clerk's office. Hope you've had a chance to review those. And we'll be ready to participate at the appropriate time. So we're going to move to number nine on our agenda is our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda. Item number one is renewal of the identity delivery contract IDC for engineering architectural services for one year. And number two, which was an added item to our consent agenda tonight, approved in our agenda, was consideration to approve a location agreement with the historic Effingham Society for the use of early streethouse.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by, um, Mr. Deloach to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Uh, we have items of old business that we'll address, then we'll come back and do the item number twelve that you want to do earlier under new business. First item in old business is the planning board recommends denying an application by Jerome S. Connor as agent for JGH Commercial LLC to rezonate eighteen point six seven acres located on Hossville Road from PD Commercial to PD Residential to allow for a two hundred and six multifamily residential development. This is map number four sixteen parcel number twenty D in the second district. This was postponed from our March first meeting, and with that, we'll open the public hearing and listen to our planning and zoning administrator first.
So this parcel is part of the planned development of Belmont Glen and was originally master planned in the early two thousands. And I'll go, this was actually the original master plan when it was known as the Research Forest tract. In the lower left of that graphic, there is an oval around the two, the parcel we're talking about. So that was envisioned as commercial, institutional. Uh, and then going on to later when the Belmont Glen master plan. More recently, when the applicant came to us and asked to consider changing that PD commercial designation to PD residential for a multifamily rental community. So this was, because it's planned development and because it's an amendment, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, we took it through the regular rezoning process, and we did ask that they complete, uh, update the plan development document. That should be included in your packet. And there was a delay. There was a, it took a few months for us to come to an agreement on the format and to make sure that this document was going to be an update to the original document and would fit that format. And in that time, the densities shifted a little bit from our initial meeting with the project engineer and owner or developer to the final submittal. There was a little change in the proposed number of units. And at that point, rather than continually delaying it, even though it wasn't really meeting the densities that we were seeing and wanting in the county, we decided to take it to planning board just to stop delaying it because the people in Belmont Glen had expressed some interest. We'd been in touch with the HOA. We wanted to just get it out here and have a conversation. Uh, Mr. Conter appeared at the planning board meeting and did answer all the questions and did address all the, all the, the issues and did state that the increased number of units from the original submittal to the final submittal represented his desire to just maximize the density and that his desire was to lock in that, that level of density so that either he would develop it or make it available for sale and develop it by other parties. So initially coming into this, um, as it was really a straight amendment to the plan development, staff were generally agreeable to the change in use. As the density increased and as the explanation came forth, and this was all happening at a time when we were reducing our density in our R three and our R six zoning districts, we felt that we could no longer really support it. So by the time it made it to planning board with Mr. Conter's increased explanation, uh, the planning board actually just voted to recommend denial. And at this point, staff are really, are in that camp as well. We feel that as currently proposed and with the explanation offered by Mr. Conter, it's not necessarily a zoning density that we can support anymore.
I'm doing some calculations right quick. Any second. All right, we are opening a public hearing. Is anyone tonight speaking in favor of this rezoning?
Mr. Chairman, CJ Chance from Husky Gay Bell. Uh, I am representing JGH Commercial. Um, I think to take Teresa back just a little bit more, this is originally a part of the IP PUD which included, you know, over three thousand acres. Um, those residential units have not been bet. Uh, Belmont Glen neighborhood has been developed, um, with the exception of the northern piece, which is currently in development and houses are going up now. Um, I think it's unfortunate that we have to come through as a rezoning instead of a PD text amendment. Uh, we do wish to change it from commercial to multifamily. Um, but the way the ordinance reads, I think, Teresa, we have to go through the zoning process to make that happen. So we're not trying to change any zonings that were in the original PUD, uh, but we're trying to change one parcel from one use to another use. In the information that we were given from staff, uh, there were certain things that were asked for, density setbacks, buffers, um, parking. Uh, we tried to meet those as much as possible. What we did present was a sample layout that, uh, could be developed on this property. I believe that that was a hundred and seventy plus or minus units, um, but we did ask for a max density of two hundred units. Um, so we presented a density, uh, to have considered by the commission and by the planning and zoning board. Uh, but we also provided a sample layout. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on that or address any questions from the public.
I might just see if the board has any quick questions before you listen to the other public, just so public can hear it as well.
Well, I'll be sure to take notes when I sit down from the public as well, so.
There's any questions for Mr. Chance right now related to this?
What spurred the change? I mean, this, you had retail commercial there, it'd have been great there. It's oblong, it's parallel to the road, it's.
I think demand.
Demand for?
Commercial. It's just, it's too far in the future. Um, there are several.
What would negate the, I mean, what's?
What, what would hinder it?
Yeah.
Uh, more rooftops.
How many rooftops do you need to?
Uh, I can't answer that question. I wish I had the money to be able to invest in it, but I don't.
Yeah.
So, um, I think it's the number of rooftops that contribute to commercial areas, uh, as to making it viable. It's been marketed for commercial land for over ten years. Um, I think that that tells you enough about what the market thinks about it from a commercial standpoint and. Uh, I couldn't tell you that. I'm sorry. I don't get in on those conversations.
You know, we need to state those facts. We need the whole fact, not just part of it.
Well, I'm, I'm not trying to leave part of the facts out. I'm just, I'm simply saying I don't know that answer.
I'm just trying to get to the root of everything.
It, it has been marketed, uh, by a reputable broker, uh, for ten years as commercial property, uh, with no leads.
So these are townhomes, not apartments?
They are. I mean, I guess the line gets blurred. Uh, they are six unit townhomes, uh, by nature of the way they look. Uh, but they are rental apartments, so.
So either, well, are they rentals or are they townhomes? Are they sold as individual?
Oh, no, they're not feasible townhomes. No, sir.
So these are rental?
They are rental. Yes, sir.
And my calculation is like eleven units per acre, about what it is?
Uh, twelve, I think, is what we asked for, Teresa.
Yeah, it was eleven points. I'm to twelve. Just say twelve, yeah.
Under the original number, the original proposal was a hundred and seventy-four units, which would have brought it in at, uh, the hundred and seventy-four was going to be about nine, uh, gross density of nine point three units per acre, net density of twelve point seven, which at that time, we were still at the twelve units per acre density, so we were generally agreeable to that. Of course, in the interim, that, that had, that density has gone down in the R three zoning. Uh, but with the two hundred and six proposed units in the final version that we saw of the PD text, that represents a gross density of eleven units per acre and a net density of fifteen units per acre.
Net. Uh, so what we do is we subtract out the ponds, the roadways and that kind of stuff, and that gives you a net density.
Gotcha. Okay.
I'm looking at this building that's in the example here. So there's, there's six units in that, uh, building, so they, two units share an entryway?
Uh.
So the folks go in there and have a unit on each side or?
Kinda. I mean, it's a, it's an overgrown porch, and so one unit goes in from one side, one unit goes in from the other side.
Uh, the two, I'm sorry, I'm going to step away from the mic.
That's fine.
Uh, the top picture, top right-hand picture, uh, that is Henderson, uh, out by Henderson Golf Club on two oh four. Um, and then the bottom left is the retreat at Quaco. Those are, the bottom left is under construction right now. The top right has been occupied for probably four years now.
You want to hold your questions? I just want to get some preliminary questions and let's see what the public has to say as well. We may have some more.
Okay, thank you.
And that may raise some more questions in our minds as well.
Sure.
Uh, before I go to any opposition, any else speaking in favor of this that would like to speak tonight? In favor, yeah. All right, senior one, we'll see if there's anybody in opposition to this rezoning request tonight that'd like to speak. Okay, if you can come one at a time, state your name, uh, for the record, that'd be great. And share the concerns you have.
Hi, I'm Susie Thurman.
Pull that mic down, please, I can't.
I'm Susie Thurman.
Perfect. That was good. As long as it don't fall out, that's good.
I don't need him, I have, um, so our concerns are, you know, we would appreciate if you would heed the planning zones, um, denial of this. Um, two hundred units, that's another four hundred cars, and it doesn't look like any of these units are one bedrooms. So you're also talking a bunch of children in the most overcrowded schools in all of the area. Um, you know, I'm not opposed, I understand people want to rent, they don't want to buy. This is just the wrong place for it. It's, it's just that simple. You want to put apartments, put them closer to town. They just need to be closer to town. Not in areas where, you know, you have a lot of large homes. The apartments are always going to bring down property values next to large homes, whether they're on property or not on property. So.
Right.
Where do you live, Susan? Where do you live?
I live in Whitehall.
Just for clarity, make sure everybody understands what we're, we're, make sure I understand what we're talking about tonight, too.
Sure.
The, the, uh, they currently can do a hundred and seventy something residential units with commercial in the front on this piece of eight. front on this piece of 18 acres, right? That's currently in the PUD?
Currently, this is designated for commercial, so it would have been...
I thought it was just commercial.
I'm trying to correct myself, too.
Retail or office?
Retail or office.
Just retail, there's, what was I heard, I heard Chance say something about 170?
That was the old proposal, they've increased it from 170.
Oh, when you originally asked for rezoning, I'm with you, okay.
Example that you see has roughly 170 units.
I got you, yeah.
That was the old...
Because originally it was all commercial in this larger acreage of...
Right, this was designated the commercial portion of that.
Just commercial, I got you. I just want to make sure I understood.
And as opposed as I am to the commercial in the area, I would rather have the commercial than another 400 cars and, you know, 800 kids.
Well, just a comment from myself, part of the reason we have PUDs that involve commercial and single-family and multifamily is that trying to get a balance.
Oh, sure.
Obviously residential brings tax burden and commercial relieves tax burden, so you're trying to find that balance in growth in commercial and residential. And so PUDs allow them to put together a whole community, so. And usually those commercials benefit, it's the type of business the community would enjoy having, you know.
Well, I would certainly, and I know that I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood, that we would certainly rather have commercial there than apartments.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight speaking in opposition to this request to move from a commercial part of this to a zoning of residential?
Tim Hutchings, again, opposed for much of the reasons that she has. As in the county development plan, these type of developments should be close to our city centers and apartments in general, from a commercial banker, from a commercial lending standpoint, that's one of the things appraisers look at, it's one of the things we look at. People who generally move to apartments, they want proximity of service. They want to be able to walk to the store, walk to the laundromat, et cetera. You typically just don't see these in these areas. I get Mr. Conter's desire to try to re-market the property, but unfortunately, that's not how it works. He needs to prove that there's more significant detriment to him to not rezone the property than there is significant detriment to the public if it is rezoned. And I don't think there's any argument that we have traffic issues on Hodgville. We've already identified multiple traffic circles that are needed. I don't think there's any argument that we have schools overcrowded in the area. We just redistrict again for the second time in about three or four years. We don't have any redistricting options. So it's a timing issue at this point, even if you said we wanted apartments there. And I believe we've got District Two School Board member on the Zoom call who can probably speak to that. And at this point, I don't think Mr. Connor has shown significant detriment because the fact that a property would be worth more if it's rezoned is not an argument that can be made for rezoning, and that's been, there's case law in Georgia for that. And even if you say that the property doesn't have any economic value now because it's not developed, that's also been tried. It doesn't matter because an undeveloped property is not expected to generate any income. So, you know, in order for really this to go forward, he would need to prove that there's significant detrimental income to him that outweighs the detrimental impact to the public. And I just don't think at this time we can do that with the infrastructure issues that we have and, again, are well-known.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition to this request for rezoning?
Good evening, my name is Todd Winderoth. I live at Belmont Glenn subdivision. Been following this matter for the last three meetings from the planning commission till now. You've heard many sentiments that I share that no one argues, of course, the traffic and just a high-density, high amount of cars, that it's already, without even this matter being brought up, the people are just screaming for help, trying to get out of town. One of the things that I applaud is Commissioner Burnett putting a moratorium on the building. I feel that Effingham County has been blown up too much, too soon, too fast, without really thinking about the infrastructure and the impact of the people, the land, wildlife and so forth. We talked about the traffic a little bit, let me touch on that. Traffic is going in one direction. We need it to come back opposite. Effingham needs to invest in Effingham. We got commercial property, we'll bring the commercial business, bring the jobs, bring, nobody would be upset to have a 10-minute commute to go to Rincon to go to work. The ports, there's room there, we got room for houses, then we got room for jobs. We got room for infrastructure. This project right now on Hodgville Road, I feel personally is being, Hodgville Road is being picked on, it's just being this magnet for all this build. We talk about Belmont Glenn getting water pressure. We get, trying to get internet service. We can't even get out of our own complex just because of the huge side in the morning because we got one entrance in, one entrance out, one car at a time. Now you're gonna bring another 200 homes trying to get down Hodgville at the same time? It's too much, it's way too much. It's affecting families. Nobody can come home and get home to dinner with their families because of the opposite commute coming home. It's crazy.
We're definitely aware.
You share the same roads I do. But the gentleman speaks and most of the people talking on Facebook platforms is the schools, another hot topic. So now the children have to be shipped out of the school district that they moved to. So all these people that are gonna come and possibly live at this subdivision, they're gonna be shipping their kids out. They're gonna be upset. No thought to anybody because they don't have to deal with it. But let's think about our children, let's think about the families, think about jobs. Chatham County is getting all the taxes from going out to dinner, y'all got dinner, going to Pooler, they get the sales tax.
I hear you, but that's a different issue.
It is, it is addition, but it affects us, that's what I'm saying. Let's bring, bring the jobs here, let's reverse the traffic and let's slow down the infrastructure.
We're trying to do that as well, but that's a different issue than this zoning.
Understood.
I appreciate your concern because that concerns us as well, we're working on that as well.
Thank you, sir.
You have a good evening.
You too. All right, who's all here that's, is in opposition that may not want to speak tonight? I just want to kind of get, let the board kind of see, these are the ones who've come who are in opposition to this zoning tonight. The sentiments that have been spoken are pretty much everybody's sentiments, the traffic, the schools, trying to get infrastructure in place before we move forward, okay. You want to speak something in addition to what we've just said?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, my name is Anthony Bouchard. I am a resident of Belmont Glenn. I've been there for 10 years, and I want to come back to two key things, infrastructure and density. Currently, the infrastructure that we have is not suited to the situation in which the area is in right now. There are a minimum of eight residential development, single-family homes that commute down Blue Jay Road, down Hodgville, up Goshen, down Hodgville, trying to get out of the county, so you're well-aware, okay? But consider utilities that have been mentioned, internet, water pressure is a significant issue, the density of children, and we all love children, but I know that 10 years ago, I moved here for the schools and for the density of the classrooms in particular, I chose to live here. I would urge you to not allow rezoning for a random apartment complex in the middle of almost nowhere, simply because it's ill-suited. Apartments by nature are transient and they bring transient elements into the area that should concern people, even though I haven't heard it come up yet. However, currently as it stands, we're behind the eight ball. I would ask that you consider infrastructure development in a intentional...
There has been a, Mr. Chairman, there has been a tornado touchdown in Pembroke, which I think is, which we're getting responded on from the first responders there, which I believe has preempted this amber alert for us, so.
That's not...
Our emergency manager is right in the back room keeping me updated what's going on, so.
So if we need to all get low, we'll holler at you real quick.
Again, just to sum it up, I would ask that you, that you not approve this zoning change and that we remember that we need to think long-term first, intentionally plan, we have significant infrastructure issues that includes transportation routes, utilities, density of population and availability of facilities to, for that population. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry for all those alarms, but I can't stop them.
You can turn it down.
You turn it down. All right, you have something additional to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So Walker Edwards, I'm the HOA president of Belmont Glenn. So in addition to the 25, 30 people you may see here in opposition to this, I do speak for the majority of 494 homes plus an additional 100 homes that are coming up on New Haven. I mean, this is, at 494 homes and multiple cars per home, I mean, we already have thousands upon thousands of cars just coming out of our neighborhood alone. And in addition to that, I did create a change.org petition that's been signed by 385.
Is that the copies we had tonight that were given to us?
Some of it's in there, yes, sir.
Okay.
Signed by 385 residents at this exact moment in opposition of this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
I think this board's really aware of the infrastructure issues that we have. Recently, we put a moratorium, you know, on rezoning because of trying to get ahead of making sure that we had quality construction, but we're also, we know we're faced with, you know, highway, public safety, we got a lot of intersections. Water, we're trying to address this, just to let people know that we have the pump station that's gonna be, I guess in about a year, it should be up and running or less?
It's already being installed right now, so...
Six months maybe be up and running?
Within a year.
Within a year, so within a year. And that's gonna greatly take care of the pressure, we're also looping the lines. So Belmont Glenn and a lot of folks in that loop are gonna see some much better quality and much better pressure, right? That's what Ben told us.
Booster station will be done by June, I thought you said lift station.
No, no booster, yeah, booster station. So hopefully we're addressing the water issues, but there's, we still have sewer and we have other things we have to be concerned about, so. So we are fully aware of the infrastructure needs and that's one reason we're already looking at what we can approve and handle, and the board will have to discuss that tonight and make an ultimate decision. So I want you to make sure you're aware that we are aware of those issues and we stay in contact with the school board. So is there anyone tonight has, we noted the 25 or 30 here tonight, we've got the petitions, proposition, these are things that the board will consider tonight, I'm sure. Is there anyone have additional information that you want to bring up? All right, seeing no one coming forward, additional information? What's that?
You left out the lowered property value.
Well, yeah, that's gonna be something that you have a concern about. I don't know that that would actually happen, but that's your concern.
More subjective.
That's more subjective. We have to stay, be careful about subjecting that we're gonna lower your property.
Can't assume that's gonna happen.
Yeah, because I could, I could show you some areas where there's apartments and the values are not hurt. So it depends on, a lot of that depends on how it's done, but you, one more item, but I'll note that, that one of your concerns is property values as well for the board.
David Rose, I'm also a resident of Belmont Glenn. I'm also a member of the stakeholders group that Teresa's put together with the planning commission, and so I rise to speak in support of denying, the zoning commission's request to deny, partly because of that, because that work is ongoing. Since that work is ongoing, it seems premature to me to rezone for something that a year, a year down the road, we may decide, yes, the communities do need this commercial infrastructure with the houses that are currently already approved and being built. Thank you.
Agreed. All right, anyone else? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing and we'll have discussion among the board, and so this will be our time to discuss and what you share with us and ask questions of the development, but as well.
Should I respond now or wait until...
Oh, you can come, you can come and respond, it'll be fine.
So I mean, I picked up on a few different themes. 200 units, 400 cars, I think that's a healthy assessment, I think that's probably accurate. This is a mixture of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, so, Susie, and I'm sorry I missed your last name, but I think that she is correct, 200 units probably means about 400 cars. Tim Herring's, I'm sorry, my writing is so bad, I can't even understand it. I don't think that this is a case of the developer saying that his property value is higher at a multifamily use. I think that it's a case, and I do agree that there is case law that shows that that is not a reason for rezoning. However, I think it's a case that the commercial market's not there. So, you know, the board can say we still don't agree, and I understand that and I agree with you, but I think that the board should understand that the biggest thing I heard was traffic, 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 traffic. However, I've got several commercial uses that I could bring in that would be much more detrimental from a traffic component and a traffic component only than multifamily would. If we had big boxes there, it would be worse. I don't think that we are...
Could you comment on that a little more?
Yeah, so, all right, so on a, let's call it a multifamily unit. So a multifamily unit usually has about nine trips a day, okay? So each one of those trips, so there's 400 cars, right? Those cars take about two and a half trips per day, so then you get to nine trips per unit per day. However, if you had high turnover on a commercial use, then that commercial use could generate 10 trips per 100 square feet a day. So you could have more traffic generated by 16-acre commercial parcel than you could buy a multifamily parcel.
That's a good point, but I think the biggest traffic issue is like school times, when you wouldn't see commercial busy.
Commercial would be scattered throughout the day.
It'd be scattered throughout the day and it would be going different directions.
Well, there's three things that we look for on traffic. One is AM peak hour, one is PM peak hour, and one is total daily volume. And so there's an argument that could be made that in all commercial scenarios, that it could be higher. What would the commercial use be? I don't know. I mean, the property's been marketed, but if traffic is the concern and I can come in with a commercial development today by right, then it could be worse, traffic-wise.
I don't think it would be at those times.
What's that?
The prime time is what we're really concerned with, it's not going on all day long, it's...
When you say the commercial might be doing a 10-hour day?
And I understand that.
Residential would be at an hour in the morning, an hour, two hours of the day, and that's why that becomes more...
It's people trying to get to work and everything else, and, you know, if you've got commercial there, they're gonna be going different directions and, and I agree, you could put more traffic on the road, but I think in the context of what we're looking at is a lot different than that.
Well, Mr. Burdette, to that, I would say that just about any use you have, with the exception of maybe the bank that doesn't open until nine o'clock, you're gonna have more traffic in going to school and coming home from school, or going to work and coming home from work. Sure.
Hard to believe.
Okay. Another thing, Mr. Chairman, I think we're getting a little confused on zoning and engineering. This is a zoning request, this is a part of a PUD that was put into place. Mr. Loper was probably the only one on the board at the time, 2005. I don't know what year it was. There are over 3,000 units that are not being utilized today, and this is only a portion of those.
And those 3,000 can still be built?
Theoretically, they are still a part of the PUD.
See, one of my concerns, CJ, is that, to my infrastructure, this is the elephant in, we're not even discussing right now, but we...
I got that one on here, too.
We're planning some workshops to think about and get out ahead, public safety's one, since it's huge, but I don't know that we can support the sewer to provide that many...
And I understand that, and I think that...
So, I mean, for me, I'd have to almost say no from that standpoint until we get out ahead, because if we approve stuff and you come in here and say, well, you approved it, now why don't I have the sewer? Well, I don't, I won't have it for several years.
Well, I don't think I should be penalized for a year, you know, because if I get denied tonight, I've gotta put it on hold for a year, right? Teresa? Six months, okay.
We have, I'll just throw, we have like 2700 permits on our books in this area.
Correct, yes, sir.
District One, Five and Two, that, we've gotta find a way to make sure we have the sewer for them. So my thought, my concern for this board is, you add 200, 300, 100, we're already putting ourselves in a position that I don't know how we can meet that in the next three years. It's gonna take us about that long to meet those obligations.
I understand that, I do, but I would rather not be denied based on zoning issues and say, we can't serve you now. I mean, because I don't think that the developer should be penalized for that.
So you'd rather develop them and then not have sewer?
No, that's not what I'm saying. That's, that's not what I'm saying.
What are you saying?
Well, I'm saying if I get denied on a zoning request based on the fact that you don't have sewer capacity, then the, and then, you know what, you open up a magic box tomorrow... tomorrow and you have sewer capacity, then the developer can't come back for six more months. If the sewer is the reason, then I think that that's wrong. If it's sewer plus seven other things, then I understand that.
What it is, it's plus, I'm just saying, that's a huge one for me.
Okay.
You know, public safety, the roundabouts we're doing at Hodgsville and Goshen, Hodgsville and Collichamby, Goshen Road, those things, we, because we are trying to take our T-Sploß that these guys let us have, that we needed so desperately, and we're trying to get these things done in the next couple of years.
Understood.
And that's going to help move traffic along, you know?
Okay.
So, you know, traffic, there's more than just sewer and traffic. We have so many infrastructure concerns right now for me.
CJ, I respect you guys, I respect the Congress.
You have a great firm, and y'all do great stuff.
They are super successful and everything else. But we've got a problem now. It didn't occur years ago or in the future. We've got a big problem right now. It's our jobs to stand up and start doing something. We represent these people.
Understood.
And there's 30 people in the crowd, I got, I got 30 more that...
You got one of me.
And I got 30 more that can't be here on time. Why? They can't travel here in time to get here because of the traffic. It's that bad. It is that bad.
And you know this board does, we try to stand with landowners as much as we can.
I completely agree with that.
We want you to be able to do with your land what you want, what you buy it, you know? And if, we have often said, the only way to control the zoning of a land is on it.
But...
So you'll find this board constantly making decisions for the landowner, sometimes over the constituents' concerns if we can't really justify the concern.
But understand that by right, commercial is allowed.
Yeah.
So...
But not commercial multifamily.
Yeah.
Because that's the other thing we're trying to do.
I mean, a laundromat, which would use a lot more water and sewer, right?
Oh, I know that it would. I don't see the numbers on that.
Those single-family homes have a washer dryer versus a toilet. You might need a laundromat.
Yeah, it's more than just water and sewer, it's all these things together. And you may have to go to the, what we're trying to look at, how much industry, commercial and residential, once and then, residential creates services cost for us. It doesn't make any money for the, for the commission to provide police and fire and all the things that we enjoy, recreation. I love you guys, but you don't pay the bills just because you pay your house taxes. What pays the bills is the commercial in the industries that so often we don't have. So that's why the PUD is looking for this balance. If you add 1,000 homes, need some commercial to help us cover those service costs. That's some of my thoughts as I look at trying to change this now.
Well, even though I lost calls, I'd like to address a few things that folks said, if that's okay.
Of course, we have, the commissioners might have some thoughts, too.
Okay. And I think that we've got to be careful about zoning versus engineering when it comes to traffic, when it comes to water and sewer and those things. I know that Mr. Larson is working hard on a number of things. I do caution the commission to be cognizant of the fact that by right, commercial could happen tomorrow without any issues. And while we may think that's great today, it could be the very thing that upsets us tomorrow. And so I understand. And I work all sides of it. So I do commercial, residential, industrial, I do the whole gamut.
We'd be willing to take that chance to have a grocery store to go to.
Yeah.
I mean, I live there, we all live there for a reason. Man, if I had somewhere to go to...
Or Dollar General.
Or Dollar General.
It's always a good place for a Dollar General.
I want to go get a loaf of bread.
All right. Did you, did you want to address any other comments that they have?
I do think it's important to recognize the fact that many of the folks that are in opposition to this also live in a development, a residential development that was developed by the same people who wished to do this. And without them, it, their neighborhood wouldn't be there.
You know, that's why I said, I meant, it's total respect for what that guy...
And you've done well with that subdivision.
Absolutely.
All right. We're, at the public hearing, we're just hearing, here's responses. How about from the commission on this side, any?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate what you said earlier. We do recognize the fact that we do have traffic issues in the South End, and that's why with T-Sploß, we're going to be spending 19 and a half million dollars in District Two alone. So, and part of those funds are coming to Hodgsville Road directly. As the chairman said earlier, we have Looping A, I think project is already done. I think we've started Looping B. As our assistant county manager said, I think we should have our booster station in or finished by June. And we're also going to replace the lift station on Hodgsville as well, correct? And that should be done within a year. Okay. So we do recognize there are some utility issues, and we are going, we've got things in place moving forward to help address those. I understand what CJ said earlier, the way the property is zoned today, there are some uses that they can do tomorrow. But I want to focus on right now on what the request is for the townhomes. And this is where I stand. I think the density is, I don't like the density, I think is too high. And just me personally, I don't know if this is a actual reason to have a reason to deny something, but I just don't like the fact that it is rental units right next to personal residences like this. That's something, I heard some folks say that, I do agree with you. I think Belmont Glenn has been a good project. I think it will continue to be a good project, but just for me, tonight, with this specific request, I would support our planning board in denial. And that's, that's just where I stand, and that's my reasons for that.
Did you want to add anything?
Honestly, I'm much the same way. I mean, I get it, the market's changing and the owners are chasing the market, but, you know, we're left chasing needs for the community, not the market. And sometimes they line up and sometimes they don't. And, you know, not, not sure we're lining up right now.
Okay. Any other comments?
I echo what they say. I think, I think these resident, or rental-type developments need to be in the municipalities personally, not out in these areas like this.
You just didn't leave me a whole lot to talk about. And I do think the infrastructure, all that we've talked about, public safety, roads, schools, all that is a reason that in addition to the density, it's all, makes it very difficult to move forward.
It does. And there's, you know, we've, and we've, in the past, ruled on things like this and voted on things, and there's just nothing like that around. There's no multifamily like this around. It's just really out of context for what we usually look for.
All right. I'm, we've already had the public hearing, I'm going to entertain a motion unless the board has any more discussion.
No, that's good. I make a motion to...
You have a motion to approve or you have a motion to deny request to rezone 18.67 acres?
Alternative to.
Alternative to.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve alternative to deny the request to rezone 18.67 acres from PD Commercial to PD Residential.
Second.
All right. You have a motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloche, to deny the request, which is alternative number two in your agenda. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it is denied, and we don't need the second reading. I hate that we couldn't get that for development, because we are, for development, we need it, but right now, I just don't think it's, it works right in this area.
Let me know.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, just before people leave, if, if I can just advise where we are on the storm, we do have a confirmed touchdown more towards the, it's coming from the south in the Sand Hill area, and it will come across the county. So it's, we're already pulling folks off the road around Mar, did you say around Marlowe or?
All emergency services have been pulled off the road at this time.
Okay.
There is hail damage already being reported near Marlowe.
So it may be safer to remain off the road while this passes through, and I just wanted to advise folks before they leave.
Is this building an adequate, safe place for folks, or do they just stick out the shelter?
Yes. And so, and I specifically asked the EMA manager that generally, a room that is more towards the center of the building without windows is your, is a safer place to be, and particularly in the center of the county versus towards the south where the storm is going to come across.
So you're welcome to remain and enjoy the rest of this meeting if you'd like. You can go, you can, if you want to just go fellowship, you can go to our other room across the hall and wait till the, maybe it passes, might be a wise thing to do. I'm going to text my wife right quick, tell her...
That's what I was doing, just to...
Not getting any response.
That's in our path where we live, from Sand Hill. We're not, we're not five miles from Sand Hill.
Yeah, we're close, too. Whoa, that looks bad.
I heard a tornado touchdown in Eden.
Eden and Sand Hill, so that's really close. All right.